Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Kalahi Valley Neighborhood Board Number Sixteen Monthly Meeting. Today is Wednesday, February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and it is now seven oh three P M. Rules of speaking: Anyone wishing to speak is asked to click the raise hand icon and when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under two minutes, and those giving reports are encouraged to keep their reports under three minutes. Please ensure your microphone is muted unless you are speaking. Please state your first and last name for the sec- uh, for the record before moving into your comments and questions, etc. Written testimony may also be submitted via email using the contact information listed on the Neighborhood Commission Office website. Please silence all electronic devices. Note: The board may take action on any agenda item as required by the State Sunshine Law Hawaii Revised Statute, Chapter ninety-two. Specific issues not listed on this agenda cannot be voted on unless properly addressed to the agenda. And you can find archive of handouts and reference materials concerning, uh, concerning to the Kalahi Valley Neighborhood Board Number Sixteen at, uh, link, uh, Google Drive link, um, when you, uh, look at the agenda online. You can see it on the paper, but it'll just be highlighted blue. Um, yeah, so we are going to move on to, or first up is City Monthly Reports, Honolulu Fire Department.
Uh, good evening. Nathan Conaschero with the Kalahi Uka Fire Station representing the Honolulu Fire Department. Uh, for this pre- previous month, um, we had one brush fire, one nuisance fire, one cooking fire, seventy-nine medicals, one motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian, and three motor vehicle collisions. Uh, our fire safety tip for the month is don't stall, call nine-one-one. Uh, call nine-one-one right away when there is an emergency. Once the operator is on the line, speak clearly and provide an accurate description of the type of emergency and the location. Remain calm. The operator may ask for additional information or provide instructions. If you find yourself in a spot where you do not have good reception for voice communication, like in an elevator or while hiking, you can text your emergency to nine-one-one. If you don't know the pass code to unlock a cellphone, you can push the emergency button to unlock it and call nine-one-one. That is it.
Thank you very much, and any questions from the board for Honolulu Fire Department? Um, yes, uh, Mr. Randy, or Mr. Franklin.
Good afternoon, sir. We had a broken water main. You have any updates on that?
Sorry, what? A broken?
Water main in Kalahi about four days ago.
Oh, that I do not know. I can try to find out and get back to you guys next month. Uh, do you know where this was?
I do not. I just heard on the news that we had a broken water main four days.
Oh, maybe water supply would be better off, uh, answering this one.
All right, thank you.
Any more questions from the board? Seeing and hearing none, any online? By any chance? Seeing and hearing none, any from the community, online or in person? Seeing and hearing none? Thank you, Honolulu Fire Department.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Up next is Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is Lieutenant Creighton Antico at the Kalahi Police Station. I'm one of the nighttime commanders. Uh, first off, let me give you some statistics for the month of January. We had two reported burglaries, five reported motor vehicle thefts, uh, fifteen general thefts, and twelve, uh, thefts from vehicles, uh, which is down significantly from, um, thirty-four in December. Um, one, uh, safety tip that I have for you folks, um, is to be aware of a lot of the phone scams going on now. Um, it's the safest way is if you're unsure about a call you get and they're asking for personal information or any kind of information, is to find out what organization they say they represent and to tell them that you're gonna call the organization directly. Um, try not to give any information at all over the phone. Uh, most companies, in fact, all companies now, they won't ask you for, for that kind of personal information over the phone or via email or via message. Um, they understand that, um, in this day and age, you cannot trust, you cannot trust, um, any kind of message because it's all so easy to spoof uh, phone numbers and email addresses. So just to be aware of that. Uh, any questions, anyone?
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yes, could you please tell us, um, specific location where the burglaries and, uh, most of the, like, the theft, you got like fifteen?
Uh, fortunately, I don't have, unfortunately, I don't have the breakdown, but it's specifically for your guys' valley area where it's being reported. Um, I'll try and make sure that I get the, kind of, a better breakdown for you guys next time. Um, but, uh, the thefts generally, it's, it's, can be, um, it varies from being a pickpocketing, a persnatch, shoplifting, uh, theft of a bicycle, theft from a building, theft from coin machines and others, um. But since I, um, I'm hearing that you guys are interested in knowing the specifics, I'll, I'll try and get a breakdown for you guys next time.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any more, uh, Mr. Randall?
LT, I, I got a question on the rape that occurred on, uh, uh, the twentieth of last month, three weeks ago in Kalahi and Lu- Lu- Lahua. Lahua, you have any information on that? Uh, should we be worried about a sexual predator or is the suspect in custody? Or is it a known suspect?
Unfortunately, I don't have any specific information on that, but I will look it up, Mr. Randolph, and then so, next meeting, I'll provide that to you guys to give you a follow-up.
Okay, okay, I got one more question real quick.
Sure.
Because we, we would really like to know if there's a rapist in our area. But I was talking to a resident, uh, from Cam Four, where I was in Cam Four, and she said that she had her car stolen. And then when she, the car's recovered by HPD, she was made a victim again, uh, by the HPD and their, uh, for-profit towing company. My question is, uh, is there a policy that HPD have that when a car's recovered from a victim who had their car stolen, uh, that, uh, officers should make contact with the owner to keep her from victim, being victimized twice?
Uh, our policy, we always try and contact the owner and try to see if they can come and retrieve the car. So I'm, I'm guessing in this situation, she was not able to come. That's the only time we tow. And, uh, we don't have any kind of, we don't have any say on what the tow companies are able to do or, or charge. Um, that's set by the state. We don't, we don't have any kind of thing with that.
So the, the contract for the tow company is a contract the state has?
Yes, it's with the state and the city, so we, we have no input at all on that.
Yeah, I looked for that policy for her, so, uh, I couldn't find it on your website. Anywhere I can get a copy of that policy that states that officers, uh, should be, that are required to contact the victim be, uh, to see if they can pick up their car before it is towed and they're fined again?
I'll try and see if I can get you a copy of that, sir. I gotta double-check if I'm able to release that.
Yeah, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions from the board, online or in person?
Yes, I, officer, I, um, I have a concern in, um, uh, consistent with from Kalahi Street and Kiloana. They've been calling, um, the police officers because of, uh, either homeless situation in Kiloana and, and Kalahi Street. Um, or, you know, there's a lot of people that's hanging around on, on that street, and it's been like, they're hanging around, not just, you know, like hour or two, but it's, it's a twenty-four-hour-going thing there. And when, um, the neighbors call, um, it seems like the police officer goes there, but eventually they, I don't know if they, they do anything on, um, you know, to, um, kind of like express what they feel because, you know what, it's such a stressful thing for them in their neighborhood at this point. Um, well, let me introduce myself. I, I got connected because, um, I'm working with the Neighborhood Security Watch. And so, um, you know, I, I was, I got their calls, and, um, yes, I did check out that place. Um, it seems like there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of trash. Um, there's even, um, feces and urines that's just going into the streams and just on the sidewalks. So I don't know when the police officers go over there and go and check out that area. And we have so many concerned, um, neighbors around that area that not, that is so stressful and not feeling, you know, secured or, you know, feel safe. Um, I, I just, can you please tell me if there's any other reports? You know, I was gonna come and, um, follow up with the reports.
Uh, in that area specifically?
Yes, they, um, I, I believe there's like, um, more than maybe four or five, uh, individuals that's been going in and out of that stream. And they've been hanging out, it's almost twenty-four hours, you know, day and night. And so, um, and I know, um, people in that neighborhood been calling, um, your station to make a report. And, you know, they, they're very concerned, they're worried because get different people who's, who's just wandering around that area that, that is not, that does not belong in that area. So that's the reason why they've been calling, but I just wanted to know if, is there any further report? What we're gonna do about it? But, you know, I'm already working with, um, um, John, um, Representative, um, May Mizuno's office, um, in, in, in concern about the environmental issues, what's going on there? And also, you know, um, just going back on some of the current incident that happened, like, for example, there was stray dogs that, that, um, the neighbors got attacked, you know, from another dog, and, um, there's people over there that's, either they doing something, um, either they conducting drugs or, and also they, they've been harassing the neighbors, you know, around that area. So I don't know if you guys had any reports on that.
Well, we got, we got a lot of reports, not only in that area, but, um, that's one of the areas that we have been trying to focus on. But like anything else, if we go and we cannot witness a crime occurring or there's nothing outright trespassing that we can take advantage of, all it is, we just, we're just trying to deter, you know what I'm saying? So I'm sorry that you guys feel like we're not taking action. We're taking the action that we can. We don't, we don't, it's not, it's not officers going over there and just, just paying lip service to the guys over there. We're, we're trying to, we're trying to do and, and be, um, active in the area. Um, recently, uh, we were told to stand down a little bit from our enforcement because they were doing the homeless count in place. So that might seem like, um, why we were, um, there might be a, a uptick of people in the area. But, um, the count is done, so we can resume our normal, um, enforcement duties. And, um, please, um, encourage them to call. Um, you said you're working with, uh, um, the Neighborhood Security Watch, and that, that's also good as well. Um, because it's coordinated with the police and we can see what we can do about, um, doing in that area. A lot of times, maybe we can, um, talk about who do you, do you know who is the, who's the owner of that area in that, in there? Is it the state or the city? Maybe they can, um, you need to talk to them about maybe increasing the ability to, uh, restrict access to the area. Because right now it's just wide open, yeah?
Yes, I just wanted to find out if, you know, is there, were there any reports? Um, is there anything that you guys did on your department, and then now I will bring this issue to the state and the city as well? Well, thank you so much, and I'm also, there's one more thing that I wanted to, um, since this is your department. Um, I've been watching Decore Park. Um, before I go to my farm at four o'clock, three-thirty in the morning, I always pass by there just to see and see the activity around that area. And I, I noticed at the end of that parking area in the park, there's no place to turn, and why is it there's so much cars in that area? And I, I was just, I was kind of just wondering, if you guys, do you guys do any patrolling there, officer?
We, we, we normally patrol all the parks, um, because, because of the steady, um, complaints that we have. Um, but the Decore Park one, so you concerned about, is there a cul-de-sac over there or what is the, what is the issue?
Yes, there is. Yes, there is. And, and I was just wondering if, like, can vehicle park in that cul-de-sac area?
Normally, if there's, if there's no sign, um, normally the law is that you cannot park in a cul-de-sac. Um, the thing that limits us is, uh, we cannot tow unless there's a sign that's gonna, that says we can tow. Um, but we can't cite and, and, and that sort of thing. Um, unless the cul-de-sac involves driveways, and then if it's blocking a driveway that allows us to, to tow and stuff.
Okay, um, Mr. Mizuno?
Thank you, board. Thank you, board member. Uh, it's not on. It is. Hello? Hello? Thank you so much. Um, I'm the new state homeless coordinator for the governor, and we'd love to work with you. Um, I think a partnership would be great. Um, perhaps we can exchange numbers, and I can bring some of our homeless team along with some nonprofit social workers to perhaps go in the area and see if we can respectfully and humanely maybe move them out, um, if they're trespassing. But we, we would love to partner with you, and we, we think we can try to get a win-win and work with each other.
Yeah, I can, I can get you in touch with our, um, our community policing team because that's specifically what they're involved in, yeah?
Okay.
But, uh, yes, sir.
Thank you, Lieutenant, and, um, you know, Board Member Rojas. We would love for you to participate with us if we were to partner the State Office on Homelessness and Housing Solutions, partner with, uh, HPD and, and help to perhaps, in a most humane way, um, kind of move the homeless who are trespassing in that area. So, thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you so much. We'll, we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, John Mizuno. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from the board? Seeing and hearing none, any online by any chance? Seeing and hearing none? Any questions from the public, the community, online or in person? Or you have one? You can come up on the mic and introduce yourself, please, and thank you.
Uh, hi, uh, Officer, my name is Christine Mahalona. I live in the area that, um, our Board Member Rojas, thank you, uh, was talking about, and I just have a question. The area where the homeless are camped, uh, part of it is under the road, which I think is the city. And part of it, um, in order for them to access that, that tunnel area, they, um, they have to, they're on private property, and that, that belongs to, to me, to, to our, not me personally, to my family, my father. So, um, I, I know the last time we got clean, they, the homeless got cleaned out a few months ago. The guy said, actually, they can only clean the city area, not the private property. But, but they do, to be polite, but they don't, they're not obligated to, but what can, like, the homeless are always there, and, and we wanna, we want them not to be there, but is there something we can do, like, they're not, if they're not outright having, like you say, doing something threatening or obviously criminal, then, um, then is, is there any reason, you know, can we call the police at all? Like, they're constantly trespassing on my property, but like you say, if you don't see it, then you can't, they're building on the property now. So, um, is, is there anything that we can call on the police to do? Or do we need to just wait until the homeless team comes? Or, you know, just wait until something, um, really big blows up? What, is there anything to do in the meantime?
No, you can, you can always call if somebody's trespassing on your private property. And we'll come, we'll check and see, and if there's things on the property that doesn't belong there, you have every right to move it off the property if you wish, and then the officers can stand by while that happens.
I'm scared to go there though, because there's like at least, at least ten, uh, ten different people under that tunnel, and they have at least two dogs. And I, I'm not gonna go down and move that stuff. I mean, uh, and
Well, is your property in the underneath or where, your property, you said it's on the way, correct? Down to that area?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, the riverbank going down under the stream. They're under the stream, and that bank is the private property, so they have, they're building like steps and stuff so they can get to their area, but, but I'm not gonna go down there because they're all under the tunnel. They have their stuff at the top of the road. It's, I, it's not.
Yeah, no, no, we wouldn't expect you to, but we would need someone to at least show us, you know, what is being talked about and that sort of thing. Um, we will need to verify where the private property ends and that, and that sort of thing before we will be able to take any kind of action. But, um, you can call. I, I encourage you to call if you feel uncomfortable and that sort of thing, and the officers will come down, we'll make our presence felt, we'll talk to people, that sort of thing. Um, of course, on, on your property as well, you can erect a barrier if you wished. You know, there's nothing stopping you if that's your private property. You could, you could put a fence. You could do a number of things if you wanted to.
I, I was told that because the stream does not belong to us, we just, we just own the bank, that we can't block access to the stream. So I can't put a barricade up, and I have put up signs before, and they, they don't care about the signs. They'll just pick them up and throw them away. So, I, but anyway, thank you. I, I just needed to know that, yeah, I could call the police if I.
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
LT, uh, for trespassing, she don't have to put up signs. Can she put a, on file, she should be able to put a trespassing, uh, uh, notice with the police department that lets any policeman that shows up, gives him the power to arrest without her being there?
No, we don't, we don't do any blanket type of, for the, for the trespassing laws in Hawaii. It's specific to the person.
So she puts up a, she can put up a sign for trespassing, and if the police show up, then the police are obligated, if she wants to make a private person arrest, to arrest them?
It depends, because we gotta, we gotta clear, we gotta have clearly defined areas and that sort of thing.
Well, that, that's her land, so if she, if anybody has a house and you put a no trespassing at my house, if you come in my yard, I can arrest you, right?
Uh, a house is not the same as a riverbank. She just explained the.
She, she's saying her property, her property, if she put a no, I, I'm just trying to get the Hawaii, because the law seems strange to me. If you put up a trespassing sign that says no trespassing, that gives the police the obligation to arrest someone who crosses into your property. They can legally be arrested, so the police don't show up and just walk away. They have to make that private person arrest if she insists on it.
We're not, we're not obligated to arrest.
You, you're not obligated to make a private person arrest?
No, it, it'll depend on the situation, Mr. Randolph.
I thought everybody can make a private person arrest, and the police are obligated to do that? That's not the case in Hawaii?
Yeah, you're mistaken.
I will research that. I don't think so, but you're welcome, sir.
Thank you. We, um, it's been about twenty minutes, and we want to keep the questioning to two minutes. Um, and also being recognized or reminding of the rules to be recognized by the chair. Please, and thank you. Um, and thank you so much, HPD, for being here. Thank you for your time, um, and take care and see you next week, or next month. Apologies.
Thank you, ma'am. You guys have a good evening.
Have a good evening. Thank you. Um, up next on the agenda, Board of Water Supply, Iris Oda.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
Yes, hi. Happy New Year's. Sorry I missed last month's meeting. I just have my, uh, main break report for January main breaks. There was two. Sorry, there was two. One was on, sorry about that. I have to look at my paper here. Uh, January twelfth, near Kamakani Street, and on January fourteenth, oh, twenty-fourth, excuse me, January twenty-fourth, um, near Moani Street. That was the two breaks from January. And the general announcement is just that we have a hundred-dollar toilet rebate for a limited time. So we're offering our customers this big, a big offer of a hundred-dollar rebate for water sense labeled toilets. Those are one point two eight gallons per flush or less. So this is more than double the usual rebate amount, and it's, um, so it's only offered till ninety days until April eighteenth. So the rebate is limited to four per household and ten for commercial customers. So go to boardofwatersupply.com/rebates to get more information. Um, so there's, that's just a general announcement, and Mr. Franklin, I did hear your question, and sorry, I don't have any information on the main break water brain breaks about four days ago, but I will have some information of this location next month. So if there's any questions?
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the board? Online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Any questions from the community?
Question.
Okay, Mr. Rojas.
Um, yes, Board of Water Supply, I have a question. If, how, how effect, what is the effect if you have homeless living in the stream and they keep dumping feces and urine into, into the stream? What, what is the effect on the water?
Well, sorry, we're not, we're not in charge of the stream or anything like that. Our groundwater.
I mean, we're talking about water. Would it contaminate our watershed or anything?
Yeah, no. The water that we provide to you is filtered through the ground, so we use groundwater. So through the natural filtration of the, through the soil and all the other things, it would be, it should be, um, uh, it doesn't, it doesn't penetrate that far down into the aquifer. So there shouldn't be, um, effects directly to our, our underground aquifers.
Correct. So that means you're only concerned about the water that we drink. What about the water that's around us? Would that?
Yeah, that's the State Department that takes care of that.
Got it. Thank you.
City, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions, uh, online, in person, for Board of Water Supply? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, um, next up, we are doing filing of vacancies. So there is one at-large vacancy. Are there any nominations? We have one person. Um, do they, do we intro? Okay. Okay, uh, so we have one person. Um, any other nominations for at-large vacancy?
Also, I'm, thank you for volunteering. I also wanted to mention, I think Mr. Sung was interested also in, in, um, filling, you know, in, in being considered for the vacancy as well, so I just wanted to put it out there. Anybody else?
Yeah, so Mr. Sung and then, um, Mr., oh, Gotti, right, Mr. Gotti, okay. So just, uh, two for now. Any other nominations online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Uh, we move on to, or, or we could do the, the voting now? Okay, uh, how many minutes? If you guys would like, you have a couple minutes to do intros about yourselves? Because it is one at-large, right? And so there's two of you. Um, which, whoever wants to go up to the mic first? Yeah.
Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Michael Gotti. I'm a homeowner in the back of the valley. Oh. Uh, my name is Michael Gotti. I'm a, oh. I've learned how to do this. What's that?
Can you make it higher so I can hear?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Hello again. All right. Uh, my name is Michael Gotti. I am a homeowner on Kua Papa Place. Previously, I've been in Kalahi Valley as a renter. I used to be an intern at, uh, for John, um, in graduate school, um, since I've been a social worker, um, at the state, at Queens, um, for the DOD, and the last six years at the VA. I'm currently the psych ward social worker at the VA, so I work a lot with, um, a lot of the types of people that I've heard a lot of discussion about today. Um, about half the guys I work with are homeless, homeless vets. Um, but yeah, I've always had a lot of interest in policy, and I've taught policy at HPU for two semesters as well. Um, anyways, just was interested in getting more involved. And aloha. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gotti. Did I say that right, Mr. Gotti? Awesome. And then Mr. Sung? Do you wanna, oh, you're, you're, you're good? Uh, okay, um, I guess, um, do we have to take a recess real quick or no need?
Um.
Mr. Sung, oh, did you want to? Mr. Sung, oh, did you want to, sorry? Oh, di- di- did you want to nominate yourself or, yeah, oh, okay, okay, actually, we have someone who's nominating themselves, uh, could I get your name real quick? Lu Le Manna, Lu Le Manna, got it, did you wanna go up to the mic and introduce yourself?
All right, uh, aloha, everyone, uh, my name is, uh, Chris Lu Le Manga. Um, I'm a lifetime resident here at Kali Valley, uh, born and raised in Kali Valley. I attended all these Kalihuka, Dominos School and Alumni Fairton High School. Um, I work, I I currently work with, uh, Mufi Hanneman, uh, former mayor, uh, of Honolulu and, uh. Just working under his leadership, uh, kinda inspired me to work back with the community, so he was telling me like, the past week, like, hey, you should. Get involved in your neighborhood, I was like, my neighborhood, like, I I just live there, and he said, no, you need to rub, rub your shoulders and work with your community, your neighborhood and. Uh, just to start there, if you ever wanna get into politics and stuff like that and, and so, uh, I'm here today. Um, I'm currently at the University of Hawaii, working, uh, with my undergrad under, uh, public health. And so, um, really interested in rubbing shoulders with, with the community members here in Kali Valley and just seeing, uh. Progression with our community, making it safer, uh, safer and, um, more, more, uh, livable, uh, place here, so, aloha, thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, gonna verify, um, do we, do we need to take a recess or yes?
Can we vote?
Oh, no.
No need, okay.
You can go right to the vote.
Right, voting.
We'll need a recess after, so I can just start.
Got it, okay, so we'll do recess after we vote, um, uh, is there an order or maybe we could start on?
I got a question, do we have to vote now, immediately?
Yes, we do have to do vote right now, immediately. Okay, Spencer can do the roll call vote.
Okay, so right now we are voting for the vacancy in the at-large sub-district. Um, I didn't catch the third gentleman's name.
Chris.
Chris.
L U A L E M A G A.
Sorry, one second.
Randy.
What?
Do you wanna ask a question or something?
No, I just didn't know where, that we have to vote immediately, it's like, okay, here's your first and go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we will continue on with the vote, um, so please say the name of who you wish to vote for.
I'm sorry, I think, um, Chester has a question.
Oh, sure, Chester, what's up? You're.
I was gonna say, um, I didn't hear the names very clearly, so can we get the names again?
Yep, just about to go for that, yep.
Yeah, thank you.
So the three people are Michael Gotti, James Sung, and Chris Lua Le Maga. Um, so Michael, James, or Chris, and please stay, state a name you wish to vote for.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Chair.
Yes, Mr. Hasi?
I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
Feels a little rushed, I was wondering if, if there's any, you know, maybe if anyone from the audience had a question of the two candidates? Or if any of the board members had any questions, just provide a little bit more opportunity for discussion.
Right, okay, yeah, if, um, actually, Mr. Sung, did you still want to be nominated? Okay, so I guess it's just two, it's just.
You're gonna withdraw?
He's withdrawing, yes, um, so just Mr., um, uh, so just Michael and Chris, is that correct, Chris, okay. Um, did, yeah, does anyone in the board, online or in person, have any questions about either, um, of the candidates? Um, did one of you wanna, um? Or both of you, I was just wondering if, um, you guys wanted to be by the mic, just, just to be in standby for questions, yeah. Anyone on the board? Or actually, yeah, anyone on the board have any questions, anyone in the community? Haven't heard or seen any, um. Okay, there's no need, oh, oh, John has a question. Oh, John, could you go onto the mic, if that's okay, so that way we, everyone can hear our word, yes.
So, so my question is the Mr. Gotti, you taught at HPU, what, what subject, I'm just curious. Okay, no, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Could, could you repeat again, social, sorry? Social policy, okay, he said social policy. And, and any other questions, oh, Mr. Hasi?
Um, here's a question maybe for both of you gentlemen, uh, what is the most pressing issue? For our community and what is something that you think we should do about it?
Yeah, whichever, um, wants, whoever wants to go up to answer?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Right, aloha, everyone, okay, so, um, the question was, what is one thing about our community that, sorry?
What is the most, the most pressing issue for our community and, and what you?
Okay, so for me, I think, uh, being born and raised here in Kali Valley, safety would be my number one, um, issue that I feel. Um, that we could probably work on or maybe strive to do a little bit better for our safety, um. And I know growing up here, um, as far as, you know, we, we have one of the two biggest, uh, housing projects. Uh, on the island and, um. With, with that being said, um, you know, there's a lot of, you know, I'm, I'm hearing the reports from police officers and, and, and other, uh, concerns in the community. About safety and homeless, and so I think, um, as far as our, 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 our families that live here in Kali Valley, safety and homeless, probably, uh. More ideal, um, topic that I guess for us here to focus on.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Gotti, if you'd like to answer the question?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a tough question, there's a lot of issues, um. Clearly. Um, as came up a lot today, you know, homelessness and how that affects. Um, people living here, it affects the people that are homeless as well. Um. I've actually, I have an appointment on Friday to talk to John about how I can sort of contribute more to that, cuz I work a lot with that population. Um, I know that. Cost of housing, um, and, you know, crime is also a big issue. Um. And of course, some of these, sometimes these inter- intersect, right, with, uh, I know there's a lot of concerns about crime among the homeless as well. But yeah, um, what to do about it, I mean, I do think, you know, the types of stuff that John's talking about, some of these initiative that he's looking to take on. With the homelessness, it's a very complicated issue. Um. But I think part of my goal would be to sort of lend my expertise with that, I've been, you know, working with the homeless for over ten years now. Um, so. And particularly the most challenging, because, uh, as the psych ward social worker at the VA, it's like, always sort of, it's not the. Temporarily homeless, right, it's the, it's the ones that are the most challenging. Uh, yeah, thanks.
Got it, thank you, Mr. Gotti, um, any other questions? Um, on, oh, you have one, Mr. Rojas?
Um, for the two gentlemen, I wanted to ask you guys, how important is sustainability and food security for? You know, for our state or for our community? Would you guys please answer that?
Righty, so the parts of, uh, sustainability within our community, okay? Well, as we practice sustainability within our community, especially here in Kali Valley, we're preparing our, our, our future, or, or, or at least we are securing our future. And so, um, it, it's a wide range from, you know, the way that we preserve our rivers. Or our valley, or our streets and our community that we live in, and so, as we practice sustainab- uh, sustainable living. It helps not only protect our future, but also preparing our future, so our younger generations that are growing up as they see the role models that. That, that we're doing to prepare Kali for, Kali Valley, to be specific, for a better and greater future. That's my, my view on sustainability, yeah, thank you.
Anything for food security?
Thank you, oh, food security.
Anything for, for security?
Anything about food security?
For food security, as part of the sustainability.
Definitely, I mean, um, I don't know too much about. The land aspects is Kali Valley, but if, if, if there's a way that we could work with the Seating County to open up more agricultural land here. That we could, uh, also implement that in our communities to help, you know, some of the, 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 the projects or even the K- Kali Valley. To kind of come together and help, uh, like an agricultural plan, um, that we're able to, you know, not only partake of agriculture planning, but also teach agriculture planning. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr.?
So the question was sustainability and food security, correct? Um. Yeah, I mean, I think this is a big challenge for Hawaii just generally, um, as well as Kalihe Valley, I mean, I don't think. This is ve- we're, we're very sustainable at, you know, across the state, really. Um, especially in Oahu with this population, at this level of isolation, with this level, level of, you know, local resources. Um. And, you know, projecting forward, these issues seem like they become a bigger issue going forward, not less so. Um, so yeah, I think that's a big question, but also a very difficult question, right? Um. I know there's some interesting things that, um, what Kukua Kalihe Valley. You know, clinic is doing in the back of the valley with, uh, you know, their farm, um, things like that would be really interesting. Um, you know, if such things are expandable. Um. But yeah, I mean, and that speaks to food security as well, um, especially, you know, if we're looking at resources within. Our community, which is not much considering, um, our population. But yeah, I mean, I think. Food security, I mean. Inflation, I'm sure, you know, that's another pressing issue, I know, dealing with, um, a lot of foods, patients on food stamps. You know, as prices have gone up, that's been an issue, um, so making sure that, uh, that types of services increases with the rate of inflation. But yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Gotti, uh, any more questions, um, online or in person? Seeing and hearing none? Um. How is everyone feeling in the board? Do you guys have any other, any other, um, any last minute questions maybe? If not, we could start voting?
Uh, I think we can start.
Oh, Ethan, yes, Ethan Dayton.
Hi, Chair, yeah, I think we can start the vote.
Okay, thank you, um, yeah, so Spencer, we can start?
Okay, thank you, um, okay, two candidates are Michael Gotti and Chris Lua Le Maga. Ethan Dayton.
I vote for Chris.
Okay, Randy Franklin?
Abstain.
Abstain? Ikaika Hasi?
Um, no.
Ki- Chris, Chester Koga?
Chris.
Chris, Alan Kum- Kumalai?
Michael?
Michael Gotti. Oh, I'm so sorry, I got them confused, I think I marked a Gotti for Chris, okay, so Ethan voted Chris. Randy voted abstain, Ikaika voted. Michael, okay, that's the one. Okay, and Chester voted for Chris.
Yes.
And Alan, sorry, what was that?
Alan, did you vote for Mike?
Michael?
Michael Gotti.
Got it, Simeon Rojas. Michael. Fernando Tan.
Michael Gotti.
Lealo Tumbaga.
I'm voting for, uh. Bye, um. I'd like to vote for Chris.
Okay, uh, the, there's nobody that was elected right now, we have three votes for Chris, four votes for Mike. And we need five to pass the vote, so we will do another vote to see if anyone would like to change their vote. And if this one results in the same thing, then we will, uh, just postpone it to the next meeting. Okay, so Chris and Michael. Ethan Dayton.
I vote for Chris.
Randy Franklin.
Abstain.
Abstain, Ikaika Hasi?
Chris.
Chester Koga. Chris, Alan Kumalai.
Michael?
Mike, Simeon Rojas. Michael. Fernando Tan?
Gotti.
And Lealo Tumbaga.
Chris. It's still.
Okay, so yeah, still four, three, and one abstention, um, I think we will postpone this to the next meeting.
So we'll chair the, um, filing of vacancies, uh, for, uh, one at-large vacancy. Uh, I'm sure we move on to the next, so the next part, um, the next. Item is election of officers to serve from July first, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The officers to be elected are the chair, any nominations? Oh, Ikaika Hasi?
Nominating.
Oh, I'm nominated, okay.
Exactly.
Any other nominations on the board? Chester Koga, yes.
Oh, I'm not, uh, I, I'm just to clear the record, that the, uh, you stated, uh, officers run from July twenty-two to June thirty, twenty-three.
Oh, it's a typo.
Twenty-four.
Okay, okay, is it twenty-twenty, oh, it's today, oh, sorry, the typo is today, so it's February fourteen, twenty twenty-four. To June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, okay, that's what it is, okay. So, Feb, okay, yeah, so February today to, uh, June thirtieth of this year, any other nominations? On the board, online or in person? Seeing and hearing none is a vote.
I'd like to put in a nomination.
Yes, Ethan Dayton.
Um, I would like to nominate Ikaika Hasi.
Oh, Ikaika Hasi, oh. Okay, is there any other nominations? Seeing and hearing none?
Yep, we can go to the vote, so, uh, same thing, uh, options are, uh, Ikaika Hasi or Lealo Tumbaga. Sorry, just getting set here. Okay, Ethan Dayton.
Um, Ikaika.
Randy Franklin.
Yeah.
Ikaika Hasi.
Yeah.
Chester Koga.
Uh, Ikaika.
Alan Kumalai.
Lealo.
Lealo. Simeon Rojas.
Lealo.
Lealo. Fernando Tan?
Aloha.
Lealo and, Lealo, do you accept your nomination?
I accept my nomination.
Okay, congratulations, you are the new chair.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Um, thank you so much. Um, yeah, I hope I make you guys proud and continue to make you guys proud. And I'm proud of all of you, if you guys don't know that already. Everyone, even the people we nominated today. That's why there was a tie, because I wanted there to be a tie, because I was like, both of them have potential, but we need time to know your potential. Anyways, okay, moving on to the next item, uh, residents and community concerns. Oh, Mr. Sung, please come up to the mic.
Hi, my name is James Sung. This is just more of a, just to let you know, there are currently around six tax proposals at the state level. The idea of government taxing itself into prosperity is a complex and debated topic. Historically, no clear examples exist of government achieving prosperity through increasing its taxes. Economic prosperity is often influenced by a combination of factors, including fiscal policies, regulatory environment, global economic conditions, and more. Advocates for tax increases often argue that additional revenue is necessary to fund essential services such as education, healthcare, and infrastructure. On the other hand, those who oppose the tax increase often highlight concerns about burden on individuals, particularly those with lower incomes and the potential impact on economic growth. It is interesting to explore the opportunities of economic growth and attracting businesses to Hawaii. Lower regulations and fees can indeed be attractive to companies and investors, assessing a potential impact to the local economy. Job market, infrastructure is essential. Balancing growth and environmental and social consideration is crucial for sustainable development. It is interesting to consider the potential economic opportunities for Hawaii with a business-friendly environment. Lower regulations and fees can indeed attract businesses, leading to increased revenue and economic growth. If the state strategically positions itself as a leader in the Pacific, it may attract companies worldwide. However, it is crucial to balance this with the need for responsible governance, ensure long-term sustainability, positive outcomes to both businesses and local communities. Currently, Delaware is punishing companies registered in its state. Hawaii has an opportunity to fill this gap. Yes, I'm talking to the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sung. Okay, are there any other resident concerns? Yes.
Hi, this is Lynette Kumalai here. This is not a concern, but it's a special invitation to everyone in our community. On behalf of Kaevai Elementary School, tomorrow, they will be holding a very special program in honor of Alexander Leholiho, who was Kamehmea the fourth. He is being honored for allocating this land for the building of Kaevai Elementary School. The program is tomorrow, Thursday, February fifteenth, at nine AM here in this cafeteria. The Royal Hawaiian Band, under the direction of our very own bandmaster Clark Bright, will be performing live at ten AM. Hope to see all of you here tomorrow for memorable time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more question, oh, um, any more, um, community concerns or comments or, oh, yes, come up to the mic.
Um, this is another thing from our, uh, neighborhood, uh, parking. We have, uh, okay, our house is super old, so we don't have, we don't have a garage, so we park on the street. And, um, there's a lot, there are a lot of cars parking on our street that are do not live on our street. And and I'll I'll talk to them and they'll say, oh, yeah, you know, I live like four blocks up, or I live, you know, up on, um, Nihi or something. And I wonder if, so it gets super crowded, and then plus we have the homeless and they have cars. Some of them are abandoned, but I mean, they, you know, they have their own vehicles that they're bringing. I wonder if there's something we can do about limiting parking, like how they have on Wilson Tract, you know, like passes just for residents and, uh, yeah, anyway, that would be helpful in our neighborhood.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you. Oh, yeah, Mr. Hasi has a res- your response?
I just, as kind of a point of inquiry, is this a time response? Should we wait until later?
But you can talk on the side.
Oh, uh, we have a, um, you've answered a suggestion for top, um, after. Okay, yeah, it's just, um, it's just for mentioning more comments of, um, community concerns. So if you have other follow-up questions, you can talk on the side about it. Yeah, sounds like, I know, uh, Mr., um, Mr. Kumalai, you had a, yeah.
Your, uh, community concern?
Yeah.
Uh, I just wanted to, uh, uh, commend the, uh, residents on Peely Vi. I know Peely Vi been an issue, uh, for a few years now about cleaning up and, uh, parking, uh, situation similar to what I just mentioned. But, uh, just recently, over the last few weeks or maybe a month, the residents been cleaning up the street. So if you guys pass by Peely Vi now, you you can see it all. They cut all the grass and been maintaining. And I talked to Marvin Ashiro. He's, uh, one of the main guys that, uh, uh, organizing the residents on Peely Vi. And the street looks way different. So, uh, come in, Peely Vi residents. And I think if other residents in Kalii have the same, uh, issues, uh, they're a good example of a community getting together and, uh, cleaning up and semi-solving the problem. Thank you to the Peely Vi residents.
Thank you so much. Uh, any other, uh, community concerns? Online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much. We will move on to the next agenda, which is, uh, city elected officials. Mayor Rick Blangardi's representative bandmaster Clark Bright.
Aloha, Chair, board members, neighborhood members. Chair Lealo, congratulations on your nomination on your, on your first day there. Thank you very much. Also, I want to thank Mrs. Kumalai for her announcement for tomorrow's event right there at the school. According to our records, we have a nine-thirty downbeat for the Royal Hawaiian Band. Thank you for that. For our mayor, and all of this information that we're going to mention about the mayor's highlights newsletter is uh, located in the chat. If you want to see their website, it's on the, on the chat. Um, just a couple of quick highlights, uh, one of that highlight is the bright yellow rescue tubes are making our beaches safer. Also, first responders jumped into action during an emergency at January's city council hearing. As well as Kahuku community meets a new dis- uh, meets to discuss a new swimming pool and rec center. An authentic hula show prepares for debut tomorrow at Waikiki Shell called Kilohana. Free to the public, nine-thirty to ten-thirty. And a new sculpture was unveiled at Honolulu's Inha Park. Again, more information can be found in the chat. The Honolulu Zoo was nominated for Best Zoo in America by USA Today. Ten Best Readers' Choice Awards, we were one of the twenty nominated. And we can assist, the public can assist by voting for the zoo. Uh, we have until March fourth to do that. Each person can vote once a day up until March fourth uh, to see if we can get that zoo up to number one potentially. Um, we are presently at number four out of the twenty there. And you can vote by going to honoluluzoo.org. Honoluluzoo.org, that's also in the chat. Vote for our zoo. Uh, from DTS, the bus service modifications, one that may affect our area uh, is the Route ten, the Kalii Aleva Heights area. The afternoon school day-only service will be discontinued for Maima Elementary School at the bus stop three-nine-one-four. That's the one right across the school. Forging on now to departmental follow-ups from the previous meeting. The first one was in regards to DTS, and that's the narrow road. A resident raised concern about Numanu Road and only one car can travel at a time with the parked vehicles on either side. According to DTS, parking is already restricted on the western side of Numanu Road in the vicinity of Kalii Street. However, DTS will conduct an investigation regarding the parking concern and inform the board of their findings by August of this year. Also, the abandoned vehicles, it was reported abandoned vehicles on Numanu Road two, a black Mercedes and a white Lexus. So from January twenty-sixth to the thirtieth, checks were made for abandoned vehicles in that area. On January thirtieth, the white Lexus was cited for parking more than twenty-four hours on a public road. And the vehicle information has been forwarded to the city's abandoned vehicles division. The black Mercedes has been moving daily. That's just FYI. Uh, also, a, an update from previous meetings, and this is from the Department of Transportation. Uh, this one was involving a missing parking sign fronting Kaevai School. From DTS, they completed their investigation. Um, it included a site inspection of the area. And the site inspection found multiple faded, defaced, and missing no-parking signs as well as faded median markings. As such, a work order is in place with the Department of Facility Maintenance to have these signs replaced and to re-stripe the faded median markings. In addition to that, while they were doing that site inspection, they observed multiple parking violations along Kamehmea the Fourth Road. They will add two additional no-parking signs uh, in front of Kaevai Elementary and one Malka of the exit driveway along Kamehmea the Fourth Road on the bridge. So again, thank you for your neighborhood concerns. They do make a difference. And, uh, one final follow-up from DTS from a previous meeting. This involves school speed signs, and a resident requested the status of replacement school zone speed signs on Kalii Street fronting Kalii Uka School. Uh, DTS completed their investigation into the replacement of a non-operational flashing school speed limit sign. And it was confirmed the flashing school speed limit sign was inoperable, not functioning. They have requested the assistance of DTS Technology Division to take proper action according to what is needed. Uh, and that's all I have for follow-up or announcements. Thank you very much, Chair. Open for questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board, online or in person? Uh, Mr. Franklin?
Good afternoon. Sorry. My first question is, uh, Cam Four Rec Center, is that the the city or the state, uh, that's supposed to be completing that project?
I believe the, is it a, a repair you're talking about?
No, I, I think there is, is out for demolition and, uh, uh, I went into Cam Four and, uh, talked to some of the residents there. Apparently, uh, this project can't get completed uh, for the last five years. I mean, we, we talk about all of the bad things that's happened over there. But, you know, that rec center would help all the kids out with their events and the, the things that they are doing. The question they asked me is, why is it taking five years to tear down a abandoned rec center and to put something in there for them? So I didn't know who to present these questions to, whether the questions are going to the city or the state.
Uh, we can take note of it, but I do believe that's run by the state.
Okay, I'll ask our state representative. My next question is, for all of the feral chickens running around, I, I didn't understand the concept of having one company, San Island, try to catch all the chickens in, uh, on this island. Uh, Florida has the same situation, but they have it with pythons, or what they did was put a bounty on the pythons that any citizen that wants to bring one in, dead or alive, can get paid for it. So I'm trying to figure out why we won't adopt the same program and then have people make like a thousand dollars on the weekend catching feral chickens and turning them in. Uh, so the, the concept that one company is going to rid this uh, island of that problem instead of making everybody on the island make extra money by catching those, uh, feral chickens. I didn't understand why we won't adopt a program like Florida did.
Thank you for that. Um, I know the customer services department takes care of that too. We can make note of that and then see how they respond. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any more questions from the board online or in person? Oh, oh, can we ask Chester? Yeah, we have one someone online. Chester?
Bandmaster Bright, I, I want to revisit, uh, school sign, the, uh, I guess the school zone signs or flashing signs. Um, can you ask, uh, DTS whether or not, I know the ones that's not functioning is the one that's inbound or from, uh, outside on Kalii Street, so not bound on Kalii Street. But, uh, there isn't one on the southbound section, so I guess the question is, is it appropriate to have one on the southbound section of Kalii as well as the northbound section?
Thank you, thank you. We'll, we'll make a note of that. Thank you. I'll get back to you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Franklin?
For that question, there are two, and we put them in with the councilman Tam office. There's one, uh, going both ways. Uh, and of course, we're in not for one, but for two of them. There's one by KC Market. And then going up the road just before you get to, uh, Kalii, there's a second one that's broken. And, uh, I think, uh, I guess the councilman office lane can tell you, but we ask for both of those to be replaced, not one.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Um, any more questions from the board online or in person? Mr. Rojas, did you still had a question by any chance or? Think you heard, yeah?
Yes, because we're having that, um, homeless issue on, um, Kilohana and, um, Kalii Street. Um, they've been accessing, um, they've been accessing through the street, um, on Kalii Street. So I was wondering if you could put, um, no parking sign, because they've been parking cars, fixing cars along the street, along the side, the sidewalk. So if we put a no parking sign and also create a no access into the stream, that could help out the neighborhood um, from going into the property. That's one. Second is, if you could create a, um, Ms., what was your last name, ma'am?
Mahiloni?
Yes, the Mahiloni families, um, they live in Kilohana, uh, one-seven-one-zero. Um, that's their address. They don't have any garage. The only place they park is on their side of the street. And what's going on is that the homeless or whoever is hanging out on that side is taking all, all the street parking. But I'm pretty sure, are there also parking in front of yours house where you don't, they do? Can you come up in the mic, please?
Okay, um, is, are you gonna be asking another question by any chance?
No, no, she's trying to explain so that way we can, uh,
Okay, got it.
Kind of resolve some problems here, and maybe we can create one suggestion.
Okay, no problem.
You asked if, if the, if the homeless are parking in our, in front of our house?
Yes.
Yes. Often. And then, uh, usually we have to go over and talk to the homeless and ask them to ask their friends to move their car, which might happen, you know, anywhere from ten minutes to five hours from when we asked, so.
Could we create a RPG in their area? So that way they can designate, because they don't have any parking space there. So that way they can designate, because they don't have any parking space there. Okay.
Mr. Rojas, are you done with your questions by any chance, two questions, right? So first one, no parking signs on the sidewalk, second, Mahalone, oh, or the street RPZ. Suggestion, uh, for that in their, um, in their street, is that correct?
Yes, and also create a, um, you know, barrier on, you know, towards. On the sidewalks, so that way they cannot enter into the stream.
Oh, the stream, right, okay.
On the sidewalk area, cause they.
On the sidewalk, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Rojas, do you have an exact address for your first concern?
Uh, it's, it's on Kalihie Street, uh, before seventeen ten. And it's along, it's along the stream. And the sidewalk is, it's right, it's right below, it's right below the stream. And that's where they're encamping, and I think the encampment of the homeless is gonna be addressed to the state. To help us out with, you know, so we can all work together from city to sidewalk. Where they hanging out twenty four hours, um, doing, um, you know, twenty four hours prolonged activities. And working on their cars and doing project on public area. So that's a big concern there and because they've been hanging out there. Or, you know, the, the, like, for example, the residents that lives there. Uh, they don't even have parking, you know, they don't have any garage in their house. The only parking that they, that they, um, you know, expect to come home to is in front of their house.
Mr. Rojas, oh, sorry, just wanna reconfirm, is that your two questions then?
Yes, yes.
If you confirm, okay.
And so you are requesting some kind of, um, a block across the access to the stream, correct?
Yes, that would be one, a, along the sidewalk, and then second is to put no parking there. And it should be monitored by, you know, like, maybe more police present. And patrols so that they can make sure that nobody hangs around there twenty four hours in, in, you know, different activities. I mean, who's gonna hang out over there unless you're doing something illegal or just conducting. Um, out of the business situation, right, that's not the place to create business or unless you're doing something illegally. But, you know, I'm really concerned about our, our residents that doesn't have any garage. I think if we could create something there where you create a no parking from.
Mr. Rojas, sorry, it, uh, is it okay if, um, Bandmaster Clark Bright can respond? Yeah, okay, thank you, did you had a response by any chance, um?
Oh, yeah, we, we, I think we got the request, um, really appreciate it, understand. Understand the concern and we'll see if anything can be done and we'll get back to you, thank you so much.
Got it, thank you so much. Um, and are there any other questions then from the board online or in person?
I got one, I got one, I mean, is there a way that they can suggest like maybe somebody that we can work with? As board members so that way we can all work together, rather than just, you know, prolonging the situation? It's, it's an ongoing situation, it's very stressful.
Mr. Rojas, sorry, I just wanna remind you about the two minute rule to ask questions. As well as waiting for the chair to call you.
With respect, sorry.
No problem, but thank you for, um, the question and concern, um. And we can talk further about it as well outside, um, but, um, we, we, um, he did answer the question and he took down the request. But thank you, thank you for bringing it up and thank you for your comment as well, was there any other question?
I got a question, I don't think the two minute rule apply to board members, does it? And for the people answering questions, that's Spencer.
Yeah, it serves for everybody.
It's for everybody. Um, did you had another, or did you had question, Chris, or concern, um, is it about the same? The same question that we just talked about, or a question for? Okay, um, I'm gonna ask one more time about the board and then I'll ask community, thank you, any more questions from the board? Seeing and hearing none, any more questions from the community? Chris is when you can come up, thank you.
Alright, hello. Um, not too sure if, uh, it was already addressed, but, uh, the corner of Kalihie Street and where, where Kalihie Street and Kamanaiki. Street meet, uh, from those that are coming down from the valley. Um, is there a way that we could make that intersection a little bit safer? Uh, as far as the oncoming traffic from Malka to town? Um, so, so those that are coming down from Kamanaiki Street, it's a really tight turn. And you, you have to turn your vehicle fully right turn to look. From the oncoming Malka traffic from Kalihie, but you're, you're, you're in the, the lane of the, the Kalihie lane that's going from town to Malka. Is there a way that we could put on one of those, um, uh, poles, light poles, like a mirror? So that way you don't have to merge all the way into the oncoming lane to either go left to town or to make that loop to go around. Uh, or to make that tight right turn to go up to the pink store and, uh, yeah. Alright, that, that's my concern or question, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Chris, could you again repeat the exact location of that? If you're on Kamanaiki, going to Kalihie, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, so as soon as you pass Kalihueka, you're, you're making your way up. Uh, it's, it's, it's that, that intersection between Kalihie Street and coming down from Kamanaiki Street. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, any more questions from the community online or in person, Mr. Sung?
Hi, my name's James Sung. Uh, quick question, does the mayor have a master plan for the city and county?
Oh, yeah, I'm not quite sure if I'm aware of, um, a master plan that you're referring to.
An overall, general plan of his goals, his dreams, his aspirations. Well, does he have something developed or anything that's in the process that he's working on?
Yes, he, he does have some major priorities that he's looking for. Right now, and I know he keeps, uh, everybody updated with his newsletter. Uh, if you can take a look at that, um, but also, you know, the homeless is always a big, uh, part of his issue, the Department of Planning. And permitting as well, uh, safety and homelessness as well, those are all some of the major things that he's looking at and continues to look at daily.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, any other questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none, thank you so much, Mr. Bright.
Thank you.
And up, thank you, up next is. Uh, here we go, council member Tyler Dos Santos Tam.
Aloha Chair and congratulations to you. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone, aloha board and community members. Lynn Robinson for Councilmember Dos Santos Tam. Um, I've put the link to, um, council member's website that has this month and all of our, um, previous. Newsletters, so I won't belabor that, I have some follow up. Um, from last meeting, um, I know that Board Member Yap and, uh, former Chair Mizuno. Were asked, um, asking me to follow up on the crosswalk at Kalihie and Nobrega Street, so to move that down. So it was a twofold question, two different risers were put in. Um, Board Member Franklin weighed in as well, so to move it down to that. Um, corner and move the bus stop, uh, both of those risers were, um, were submitted shortly after that meeting. And we, they have been referred to the Department of Transportation Services. Um, I wanted to follow up with, um, Board Member Franklin. Um, I know that we had had a lengthy discussion about motion sensor lights at, um, the Kalihueka Park. Um, after some discussion with the parks, um, and, um, other community members, council member. Um, we've, we've put in a request to just keep the lights on overnight in that park to deter loitering and crime. We, um, they're still considering our request. But, um, that wouldn't require any other installation and would keep, um, things lit over there. So of course I will keep you updated about that. Um, also, thank you for sending over the, um, Carol, California ordinance about, um, legislation. Um, relating to how many parking tickets are allowed before. We have the green light for, um, HPD to call for a tow. Um, Councilmember has that information and, um, we've, we've discussed, I don't have any other follow up, but he's certainly seen it. Um, so thank you for that. Um, again, that, that bus stop is number three five five three and, and that has, that riser has also been submitted. Um, I did, so I'm gonna apologize. Um, I had quite some time ago sent a letter or a riser for the flashing school zone speed sign. I was glad to see that Bandmaster actually got a response. Um, I was only tracking the one that's kind of over by Nobrega Street. And I did go back over there, check on it, take another photo. And sent, um, a letter from our office, not in riser form, to the director of DTS to follow up, so they're tracking. But now, again, I apologize, if the other one is not working properly, coming from the other direction, I will do the same. Um, no problem, but, um, again, I apologize that I wasn't tracking both. Um, I know that, um, Board Member Rojas had asked about, um, enforcement of no parking in front of Kalihueka Park. Um, I, I went over there, um, shortly after that meeting, two different times, um, of the day. And saw all the loitering and all the cars and all the mopeds and, um. Did ask for, um, our D five community policing team to get over there and enforce and they can't be blocking the sidewalks, they can't be parking where they shouldn't. And I'm hoping that, um, you know, um, the second time I went by, it didn't seem like they were there and they've been following up. Um, anyone who sees that, it's gonna be the most effective to call nine one one. And say, you know, this is an ongoing issue and they're over there, you know, blocking the sidewalk and I have no problem helping. But, um, sometimes it's not the same si- situation if we don't, you know, get the police engaged real time. So, um, with that, I think there were some other questions. Um, that you might have for me, so I'd be happy to answer if I can.
Thank you so much, are there any questions from the board online or in person? Mr. Franklin?
Hi Lynn, real quick, I, I talked to the lieutenant from HPD recently, but. I, I, for the councilmen, I believe our residents are being victimized twice by, uh. When they get their car stolen and when their car is recovered. That, uh, that they are being victimized by the for-profit companies that, uh, the city or the county or the police department has hired. Because now you have your car stolen and then you get your car recovered and then you got to pay for the impound and the storage. After having your car recovered. I looked online for HPD policies to see if they would. If there's a policy where they have to contact the victim first before they tow the car. To see if that victim can pick up their car without being victimized twice, uh, once for having their car stolen and second by HPD. That's making a profit off of towing their car. So, uh, I think councilmen can look into that, to see if there's a policy that.
Yeah, I think I got most of that, you were kind of breaking up, but, um, I, I can absolutely follow up in that, yeah, so. So the question was that, you know, or the concern is.
The question is that, I'm sorry, the mic went out, the question is that, I believe the residents, uh. Are being, uh, are being victimized twice, once when they get their car stolen and once when their car is recovered. Uh, I could not find a policy that states that HPD is to contact the victim before it's recovered. And that, uh, will be. For the, you know, the unprofitatory company, they make great deals of money, billions of dollars just to impound a car.
Got it, I think I got it.
You had your car stolen, you are a victim, so we should try to assist them.
Yeah, interesting, I'll follow up, for sure.
And we could also, if you'd like to have it typed out and emailed, I mean, they give like email that way in case you didn't get all of that, cause it was breaking up somehow around the same area. Um, yeah, for follow up, but thank you so much for the question, um, any other questions from the board online or in person? Oh, okay, that's, um, Mr. Rojas?
Yes, um, I would like to ask, um, uh, Ms. Robinson, I would like to ask, um, for your support. On, um, the issues in Kalihie Street and Kilohana. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, bulk trash, all kind of trash on the sidewalk. Uh, where the homeless at, and I was wondering if, um, we could work together and clean that place up. And also as well as, um. If you guys, um, would support that no parking around that area. Um, and it should be limited instead of the same people parking over there twenty four hours. And, um, it's, it's, it's been a hangout place for, um. People that's not belong to that commu- belong to our community, that's what I see and I witness.
Thank you for that, um. You know, I absolutely support the request and I think that you and I have, uh, briefly discussed the issues over there. Some of it's gonna be state, but it's, um, but the city things, you know, um, could be maybe viable solutions. I think that Bandmaster is gonna put in that request. So there isn't really a mechanism for us to like double down on that. Um, but we're certainly would not stand, you know, in the way of that, so thank you Bandmaster. If you did need our assistance or if you thought it would be helpful for our office to weigh in, we absolutely would.
Thank you, and any other questions from the board online or in person? Seeing and hearing none, any from the community online or in person, I do see Dana Yap, if you'd like to unmute.
Yeah, my question is, uh, I wasn't able to make the community hall meeting. But I just wanted to know if there is any place that we can look, what transpired at that meeting? And how often do you have the town hall meetings?
Hi, um, hi Dana, thank you so much. I, um, I forgot to mention that, that we had our town hall meeting on January thirtieth at the Kalihueka Elementary. We had, um, just over thirty residents attended, we co-hosted that with, um. Councilmember and Senator Kim and, um, Representative Maemizuno. And, um, so it was very well attended, um, there were updates, um, that I think that you can find in everyone's newsletter. Um, so, um, legislative updates, community updates that were shared by each of the electeds. And then, uh, most of it was Q and A, sharing community concerns. Um, I think that we've been able to follow up on most of those concerns, which ha- um, had to do, um, with a little bit with crime, parking. Infrastructure and all of it, some of it was state, some was, um, city and we have. Um, but, um, there were no, you know, there, I, there were no announcements that I, I would. Say would be outside of anything that you could find with public information through their newsletters. Um, if anyone does have questions of any of their electeds. Um, I encourage them to reach out to the offices, I don't wanna toot my own horn. But both of those offices, Senator Kim's office and Maemizuno's office, um, have, um, extraordinary staff. That are, um, willing, um, that are available and willing to help. So don't hesitate, um, to reach out to any of us and, um, with your concerns. Um, as far as timing, I don't, I don't think there's a regular timing, I, I, um, for, you know. Um, for the town hall, I would, I would guess if I were to venture, I guess. There might be something after the legislative session is over, to be able to do a, a wrap up for the state ledge. And then anything, any updates that we have at the city.
So is the goal for that meeting to drive this meeting as far as getting more people involved with the neighborhood board? From those meetings, is that the goal or what, what is the tension? Cause it's not, it's not very feasible to have it with just the same amount of people, same board member people, so. I just, I guess my question is, is the goal to get more people involved in the neighborhood board?
I don't know that it was necessarily to get more people involved in the neighborhood board, it was a, another opportunity. Without talent, time limits and face-to-face engagement with those electeds and then follow up from our office.
Okay, thanks.
Of course.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And are there any other questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none, thank you so much. And happy Valentine's Day to you too.
Thanks, Chair. Aloha.
Aloha. Okay, and next on the agenda is Governor Josh Green's representative, Deputy Director Kristin Sakamoto and DOT representative.
Thank you, Kristin Sakamoto, on behalf of the Office of the Governor. I shared a link to the Governor's newsletter in the chat and just wanted to highlight one thing from there. And that is that the Governor gave his State of the State address on January 22nd and during that speech, shared some of the successes of the administration. We also, the Governor also emphasized his plan to continue taking action to address his priorities, namely Maui's recovery, affordable housing, homelessness, healthcare and climate change. So I encourage all of you to take a look at the newsletter. I've also noted Mr. Franklin's question regarding, I believe, the status of demolition and construction at the Camp 4 Rec Center. So I will follow up with the administration and try to get an update for you on that. I'm also available to take back any other questions the board or the community may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other questions from the board? Oh, Mr. Hasi?
Thank you, Kristin, for speaking with us. So Mr. Franklin was asking about the demolition of the rec center. I'm curious if there's any plans to build a new rec center, because it's been inoperable for, gosh, a decade? Some inordinate amount of time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And, oh, okay, it looks like there's a question from Hernando Tan. You'd like to unmute?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This question is for Mr. Komodo. I had rented a car rental this past Sunday at the airport. And what I found was, I think we needed, first of all, it's commendable about how beautiful the car rentals are. That's the location and the situations with the tourists, the flow. But I would like to raise some concerns about my experience. I think needs, it needs a little bit more signage to easily locate directions of where you want to go in terms of like finding where is the car rentals offices or where you can do your transaction coming from the ground floor, you know, riding that escalator. Because I actually have a hard time locating it when it's, actually it's right on your turn. You do your right turn, but as you're going up, there's no signage directing you there. Simple stuff. But that also led me to talk story to the, the front desk person about the locations assignments and was there any complaints from the customers, other complaints? And she kind of shared with me that, yes, I can see your frustration, because I got lost for a little bit, which supposed to be simple. But she said, please help us, because yes, we get bombarded with a lot of complaints from the local people. And of course, I'm disappointed that, you know, it's our taxpayers' money building there. And it seems, it seems to me, as I understood what she said, and I experienced it that night, that day, that there was no accommodations on the local guys when they're renting a car, because there is no parking for you to, a space for you to park so that then you can go into and transact your car rental business or transaction. So, and also, as I was going through around the airport, I cannot even find a signed car rental office. Because the signage, again, as you are picking up people from the airport, it doesn't say, you can only, you're focused on car rental returns, you know, freeway here and all that. But there is no right angle 90-degree sign that would tell you where's the car rentals are. And I find out later, as I was standing across the street waiting for my pickup, they was right there, pasted on the wall, facing the airport. So simple stuff like that actually frustrates people. But I'm more concerned about the local guy seems to be not considered about how to make it a good experience for them when they are transacting a car rental, car rentals. One, there is no parking for them. And the front desk was sharing that to me, please help us complain, because we don't deserve this, getting the complaints all the time. So I guess it's up for, I guess, improvement.
Okay, thank you for sharing your concerns. I will pass them on.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any more questions from the board?
I got one.
Mr. Rojas?
Yes. Good evening. I would like to request for homeless advocates to, you know, that place where it is an issue right now in our neighborhood in Kalihi Valley, Kilihona and Kalihi, Kalihi Street. I would like to request for advocate, homeless advocates to come over there and check it out. You know, maybe they could advise those homeless people there. And also, I would like to also request for our new coordinator, John Mizuno, to come over there and maybe he can overlook at it, you know, and I would appreciate that. Since the Governor is very concerned about houseless individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. I'm not sure if John is still there, but if not, I will definitely touch base with him. Thank you.
He is still, he is here actually. President, did you want to come up? John?
Yeah.
Mr. Rojas, thank you. Yes, I agree. And I will take you up on that offer and I look forward to working with you. I think proof of concept is, you know, Board Member Rojas, if you could join me in that endeavor. And if we connect with HPD, possibly share us, but that's a goal for me. So I'll do that. Board Member asking, I want to do that. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other questions from the board online or in person? Seeing and hearing none, any more questions from the community online or in person? May Mizuno?
Good evening, Deputy Director Kristin Sakamoto. I was wondering, I heard earlier that Department of Transportation representative is here?
I'm not sure. I did not hear one way or another if somebody was on. But if you would like to request their presence for the next meeting, I can certainly ask them.
Yes, please, because I was reminded of our meeting on December, the end of December. We had a meeting in the intersection of Liki Liki and North School Street. And we brought up the issue of the right turn Mauka bound. And they told me, back then, I was chair of the neighborhood board, that they would come to the neighborhood board and give us an update on how to address the issue. So I was wondering, we can, if we can request for them to come next month?
I will send on your request. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any more questions from the community online or in person? Mr. Sung?
Hi, name's James Sung. Just wondering, does the Governor have a master plan for the state? And if he does, where do we find it?
The Governor did share his, in the State of the State address, his priorities and how he kind of plans to execute on those. I believe that is available to the public and I will, I can track that down for you and provide you that information. I'll try to put it in the link if I can find it in the next, before the board meeting ends. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
I just wanted to thank someone. Yes, for, for, I would like to thank Representative Mizuno's office. You know, I contacted Charlie, which is their, their, their office manager, I think. You know, he did the environment, I told them about the environmental issue in that street where, you know, there was, there's feces, there's, there's urine, it's just they dumping it out on the, you know, on the, on the stream. And I think it's a concern for, for our environmental. So the Office of Mizuno, I requested for them to make a letter to the Health Department inspection and also EPA, because that's a concern to our environment. And I would like to thank you for that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Are there any other questions for the, from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda, let's see, is Senator Donna Mercado Kim.
Hello, my name is Rachel. I'm representing, representing Senator Kim's office. I am her new committee clerk. Our community report has been emailed out to all board members and community members that have subscribed to receive it. If you haven't received it to your email, please email our office to sign up to receive that each month. The report highlighted numerous bills that Senator Kim introduced. I'll touch on a couple of those that Senator Kim wants you to be aware of. And if you feel so moved to do so, if you're in support of the measures to provide testimony. One is regarding feral chickens, that's SB 2401, which appropriates funds to the city and county to expand their feral chicken control program. It is the result of the Working Group resolution that was passed last year. Another bill that might be of interest to you is her weed whacker bill, that's SB 3011. There's already a law that restricts leaf blowers, making it so they can only operate between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM on weekdays. So this bill will basically just include weed whackers in that bill, since they makes just as much noise and it infringes on people's peace and quiet. To check if and when these bills will be heard, you can visit the Capitol website at www.capitol.hawaii.gov. Search for the bill and that'll take you to the status page where you can also provide testimony. Last month, Senator Kim mailed out her community bulletin. If you haven't completed your survey yet in the bulletin, please do so, so that your responses will be factored into our final results. A couple of community updates on, included also in the newsletter was the groundbreaking for the Hawaii Public Housing Authority, School Street Affordable Housing for Seniors. In this first phase, 250 units are being constructed, providing essential permanent housing for our kupuna. There is a new Red Hill defueling update, which basically says that they have successfully defuelled the removal of 104 million gallons of fuel. And they're just working on getting out the residual fuel. So they are ahead of schedule. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Franklin?
I got a question real quick. I was talking about it today. On Senator Kim, I want to know if she's gonna adopt, if she was looking at adopting the Florida plan, instead of having one or two companies try to catch the feral chickens, that any resident can catch feral chickens and bring them in for a bounty, which would eradicate feral chickens in two years, like Florida's doing with their pythons. Where it's set up now, they got one company, I think San Island, both run around the island and catch all the feral chickens. If she was to look at the Florida program, you would empower every single citizen that want to make $500 to $1,000 on a weekend to go out and catch feral chickens and turn them in. And I believe that program is the best program and it would help us eradicate all the feral chickens in a couple of years.
Yeah, so I actually haven't heard of that program and I'm not sure that anything like that is being done in the state of Hawaii. But I'll definitely look into that and do some research and bring it to her attention.
Thank you so much. Any other questions from the board online or in person? Mr. Hasi? Or? Is it Mr. Hasi?
Thank you, Rachel, for the report from Senator Kim's office. I just wanted to flag that, you know, the, the military may be ahead of schedule with the de-fueling of Red Hill, but there are still families which are experiencing new fuel in their water supplies every day now. So, you know, the, thank you. I mean, the, unfortunately, the report makes it sound like it's, that things are okay, but it's, it's, it's still very, very concerning. Thank you very much.
Understood. I'll definitely bring that up.
Got it. Thank you. And any other questions from the board online or in person?
I got one for, for the chickens.
Okay.
Okay, for the, for the chicken, you know, we have, we have a farmer, and there's a lot of chickens in Hawa'i Kai. Now, what is our, what is our protection as farmers? If we catch all those chickens and then we got animal lovers, what is the, what is the protection for us?
Protection in terms of?
In terms of, if we catch the chickens and then it's in our property, but the animal lovers, who really cares about animal, they, they want to sue us or they want to report us for catching those chickens. So is there any protection for the farmers or, you know, because there's a lot of chicken in the farm?
I'm not sure specifically about this issue. I'll definitely bring that to the attention of Senator Kim as well as the Feral Chicken Working Group.
Thank you so much. Any other questions from the board online or in person? Seeing and hearing none, any questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none, thank you so much. And next, oh, next on the agenda is Representative May Mizuno.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day, my former fellow board members. So just to recap, I got appointed by the Governor on January 16, 2024. And session began on January 17, 2024. And we just had enough time to introduce some bills for this year. And I am more excited to let you know about House Bill 2662, which establishes a two-year pilot program with HPA, the Public Housing, to provide youth in public housing with educational opportunities to increase skills and participate in sports. And I'm happy to announce that today, Human Services, or yesterday, Human Services passed it and it's going to Finance Committee this time. Before I proceed, I just wanted to let you know that I am appointed to four committees. First is the Corrections, Military and Veterans Committee, and there's Education Committee. There's Higher Education and Technology Committee, and there's also Water and Land. And there's another bill that we introduced this year, House Bill 2701. And this is supposed, the bill would open up non-agricultural leases to farmers when leases expire to maximize ag lands and improve food production. Today, it was heard by Agriculture Committee and it passed, however, they turned it into study instead. And there's also House Bill 2592 to help And there's also House Bill two five nine two to help fight graffiti. And this bill would authorize the city and county to increase penalties for graffiti that exceed the state penal code. And we introduced two gaming bills. However, it was kind of dead on arrival. It was triple referred and it would have benefit the Maui wildfires victims. And to address the issue about the main break earlier, it was on two six four zero Kalihii Street. And it happened on February ninth, in, early in the morning, Mr. Franklin. And for the homeless encampment, Mr. Um, Mr. Sam, um, our office on January seventeenth, um, sent a letter to the Director of Environmental Services, Director Babcock, as well as the Department of Health, uh, to investigate the hazardous fuels because they were repairing vehicles in the area as well, correct? Yes. So that was sent. However, we haven't received any response from them yet. So I spoke to Charlie, my staff, and he would, um, make a follow-up on both offices tomorrow. And I believe Charlie will also be coming down tomorrow on Kalihii Street and Kamanaiiki to investigate the area as well. On a positive note, um, we received a letter from the governor that Kalihiu'ka Elementary School, um, CIP has been released for eight point two mil, uh, million dollars for improvements, including stabilization and fencing. Remember, it was an issue long time ago and still an issue right now with the criminal activities in the area. So with this, it will help, um, help the issue for the kids especially. And what else? There was an issue. Oh, yeah. Uh, for Piliwai, Mr. Um, Marvin Oshiro is heading that, um, cleanup on Piliwai and I want to commend him as well for taking the charge on that. And for the feral chicken though, Mr. Franklin, um, I know you mentioned about the Florida program. We have to look into that. I am not too sure what the program entails. Okay, so we have to look into that and maybe we can adopt that here in Hawaii as well. And that's about it. And I'm here for any questions.
Any questions from the board online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Any questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much. And next on the agenda, okay, any com, general committee reports or assignments? Uh, Mr. Hasi?
Okay, just wanted to, just wanted to report out that right before this meeting, we had a, um, a, a meeting of the Sidewalk S-Curve Transportation Committee. And we reported out, well, there's six items that we discussed and we're hoping to, well, we voted to advance them all to the Neighborhood Board, um, for further discussion. Um, so the items were a traffic study for the Hala Road and Kapalama intersection, where there's been a lot of accidents over the past several years. Um, signage, um, at the entrance of schools, uh, at, at the entrance of Kamane shopping center on the school street side, um, asking to, for motorists to not block that entrance so that, um, you know, people can, can, um, you know, have egress and ingress. Uh, no parking signs on Numaana Road from three to five PM is the times that we're asking for. And then also, uh, for the curbs to be painted red at bus stops. And then also, uh, let's see, um, and for Ms. Mahelona, this might be applicable for you. We're, we're, we're very concerned about the problem of people parking on sidewalks. And it's similar to the, just sort of the excess of people parking within Kalihii Valley period. Um, and so we're, we, we want to try to figure out some alternative parking solutions um, to remove those cars that, you know, you may not want right in front of your property, um, to other, other locations. And, um, the last item was, um, to discuss with DOT the possibility of syncing up the lights on Liki Liki Highway, um, Mauka of School Street, so like between School Street and, uh, Nalaniha. Um, like for me, when I, when I go to, when I take my kids to school in the morning, I find that, uh, it's pretty much stop and go. You know, there's, there's no way to just drive all the way down to School Street to get into the freeway, uh, because you get stopped at every light. So ideally, we're hoping that DOT could sync up the lights so that driving at speed limit, you can just have a straight shot all the way down the, the road. Okay, that's the six items. And I just should share that I did speak with someone at DTS earlier today. And so they are already starting the process of considering some of these requests.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Um, anything else or from the board? Or, oh, Mr. Rojas.
I just wanna, I ha, I have a question for you, um, Hasi. And also I wanted to create one input. Um, as far as their street, there's a erosion somewhere on that sidewalk. Uh, would like to address that to you, um, I know. And then also, on Kilohana Street, okay? Um, it's eroding towards the stream. Um, and also, there's a traffic rail on Wailele Road, okay, going up Kamaneiki. And, uh, there's, um, yeah, the traffic rail is, is got hit by some kind of truck and it's, it's right close to one of the house. It's not been fixed yet. So I think I mentioned that through Department of Transportation, but I, I, I would, I would like you to support me on that if you could, all right, on the record. Thank you.
For next month's meeting.
Got it. Thank you. And, um, any other, um, any other, um, comments or updates from your committees online or in person? Anyone from the board?
All committees or?
It's just general, yeah. It's not, um.
Really quickly, I know we're moving really fast because we ran out of time. For the Beautification Committee, I want to know, we cited four lots and I know people, we had Peacock fined twice. So I, uh, contacted them and filed violations on them twice. Uh, I'm also filing violations for the third time against the bus bench across the street. Uh, I, uh, we have had all of our, uh, signs, uh, every, I make like three to four complaints on three one one, which is a great thing for all of our citizens to use. If you have parked cars in your neighborhood, things not moving, working on the street, I suggest everyone to go to three one one and make the complaint because they will give you a complaint number. And so far, they seem to be, uh, investigating those complaints. There's two more lots I'm gonna find, uh, besides Peacock, uh, because as we drive by them, and I drive all over our area looking for things to call three one one on so I can cite them. So, uh, that's part of the Beautification Committee. So I'm glad they did a good job on Peacock, but we did cite them twice and had, uh, the residential code people go out there and go after them. Uh, and that's what I, uh, want everyone in your neighborhoods to do. If you see a sign that needs to be replaced or something that's faded, uh, please go to three one one. We also having the street sweepers coming down Kalihii now cleaning the streets because we have made complaints against them. And I made another complaint against them because they don't seem to understand that you have to go down the street when the cars are not there, instead of when the cars are there. So I just made another complaint against the street sweepers coming down our area because if you don't get the, the curves clean, grass growing, and grass grow. It's simply if you use a street sweeper, you can alleviate all of the grass growing out of the curve by taking the dirt away. Uh, that's all the updates I have for the Beautification Committee.
Thank you. And for updates, um, usually for reporting, you can, um, usually if you have a, um, when you have your agenda, that's what you can report on, um, with Hasi, um, Mr. Hasi. He had his meeting before this monthly meeting, so he was able to bring advance on those. So even if he did things outside, you can, um, you can bring it up, but it's mainly if you have held a meeting outside of this meeting, then you can definitely report and it's encouraged.
I'm lost and we're not allowed to report our committee meetings anymore.
You, you can, uh, I wanted you to, but, um, from what, uh, um, Spencer was echoing or commenting is that you, you don't have to, but if you held a meeting, yes, because we want to know because it's an official event that happened, people might have missed out and would want like to know.
Okay, I can explain a little bit. So committee reports are for reporting what happened at committee meetings. I think what Lealoa was explaining was things that you're reporting would be more of like, um, just things that come up in the community, which you're working on personally. But I haven't received any committee agendas from you or heard any, any meetings. So just more like official meetings, committee meeting reports.
So you want us to have a meeting before we can give an update at the board?
Oh, you can give an update at the board anytime, but for this section, committee reports, it's from the committees, so. No, it's, it's fine that you're bringing this up. I just think it should be done at a different time, maybe.
That's what I'm asking. So at our meeting, formal meetings, we are not allowed to give committee meetings. That's what I'm trying to figure out. Because this is the time we supposed to give them, right?
Um, so for committee?
I'm trying to get clarification.
You're supposed to set them up, uh, a week before they happen. And it can be any time. It doesn't have to be?
That's if we have a meeting inviting board members to come to a meeting. We can't have a meeting.
Board members and anyone approved me.
Right, we can't have a meeting seven, I read the thing, we can't have a meeting seven days before without informing the board. But while I'm saying that, you're saying that we are not allowed to give updates at our committee meeting. Now, I did not have a meeting, but the work I'm doing in the committee on the community, am I not supposed to give an update at the board? That's my question.
No, um, you can. You can give updates and I usually admire.
I'm lost then.
You can give up.
Because we usually give an update from every committee, whether the committees are working on something or doing something. Now, the, the, the code states that I cannot, I have the seven day, if I'm gonna have a meeting with the members seven days before, I have to submit it to Spencer and let the public know so the public know we're having a general meeting. I did not do that, but because I don't need a meeting so far. But the work, are you saying that we are not gonna give committee meetings at the board anymore? That's what I'm asking you.
Oh, okay. I guess the official titles, is that what you mean? Like the beautification and?
Right, we give up, we've been giving updates for two years. Are you stopping that?
Are we continuing it? Or, yeah.
Are you stopping? That's my question.
It just seems like you held a meeting when you give reports for your Beautification Committee meeting.
You see, we, for the last two years, we've been asked if there's an update to our committees. Are you saying that we are not allowed to do that anymore?
Committees meet, that's what they do. And I haven't seen a committee meeting from you since you've?
We're talking about two different things. The meeting, I understand what a meeting is. A meeting is, I have to, before, seven days before, I have to give you advance that we're gonna have a meeting with members of the board. That's one thing. What I'm talking about is, what, are you saying that at our meeting, I am not supposed to bring an update? That's the question.
I think we can talk about this after the meeting, um, but just to, just to say, okay, just to say, just to say this, committee reports are for reporting what happened at committee meetings. We can end it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, oh, okay. Any more question or actually, I think, okay, approval of minutes, okay. So approval of regular meeting minutes, we have a motion? Oh, thank you, Mr. Hasi, for move, uh, any second?
A second. I'd like to say something about the meeting. Wait, I got a question with our minutes because I'm gonna disapprove of them. Listen, I, I, I've been watching our, our board meetings and
Mr. Franklin?
And our, uh, minutes are vague, they are informative, and they does not reflect, uh, comments from the board or opinion. That, these meetings are like, what did the elected officials do? This meeting, if you read this, it doesn't reflect anything that any board member has said. It just said, board members spoke update. If we talk about feral chickens or we talk about parking or we talk about something.
It's, Mr. Franklin, this is not the time for this.
All right, then I'm just disapproving of it. Somebody can approve it.
Okay, just to follow up on that, if anybody wants to add anything to minutes, feel free to do so and you can submit it to me and, and the board can approve that, um, as well. The, basically what the Neighborhood Commission Office does is provide just a baseline, what happened at the meeting. And we provide a video record and timestamps of it so people can see all the information. And what happens is we often run into all these needy gritty details where I actually put something wrong and then we gotta go back and fix it. So, um, yeah, we can continue to talk about this more offline if you want.
Yeah. Oh. Okay, Mr. Mizuno, if you'd like to say something real quick? Okay.
Thank you. Gonna ask for your kind indulgence. I don't know. Thanks, guys. Thanks. Okay, th- thank you. I'm so sorry. Um, thank you for your kind indulgence. I might be out of order, but I, I wanted to report that, um, I may be opening up Kauhale in Kalihii. Um, I wanted to make it known on the record because this may be as early as March next month to, to help homeless and possibly another one in April. So I just wanted to be transparent and let anybody know. If you have any questions, please call me. I'll do my best to answer all the questions. Thank you for allowing me to do this.
Okay, thank you. Um, was, can we get a second? I'm still trying to get a second.
I second.
Approval of the minutes. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dayton. Um, and, okay.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. Um, approval of the January tenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting minutes. Ethan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Randy Franklin?
Nay.
Ikaika Hasi? Chester Koga?
Chester's not online.
Okay, Chester left and, sorry, I didn't repeat it. Ikaika voted a, or aye. Uh, Alan Kumalai?
Aye.
Aye. Simeon Rojas?
Aye.
Fernando Tan? Looks like he left us. Uh, and Lealoa Tumbaga?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, minutes are approved, five in favor and one abstention. Thank you.
I think that's one opposed.
One, one, one opposed.
Okay. And then any, um, other quick reports, chair reports and correspondence? I currently don't have a report. Anyone, uh, any quick correspondent? I think John made his, but if that is it for now, then, um, next meeting will be Wednesday, March thirteen, twenty twenty four at seven PM. Broadcast meeting, Neighborhood Board meetings aired on Alilo Channel forty-nine on the fourth Saturday of the month at six PM and the first and third Sunday of the month at nine AM. Um, and any more general announcements? Seeing and hearing none. Um, thank you, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day. See you next month. And this meeting is now adjourned.